United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation under God. In this all, if we're going to be in that, that is so honorable.
Thank you. The minutes of the October seventeenth meeting is our open for approval. I am involved. Second?
Hi, yeah, second.
Okay.
Sounds like a.
Still a party, lot line. Move it up here township. It's in Chickmont Trail and Pocono Mountain Lake all the way up. Up north, all these buildings combining two lots. Zoned R two medium density residential, it's uh. Zero point six five oh acre tract, which is on lot waters and storage are proposed, well brush and wood covered. And moderate slope conditions throughout the. Minimum lot size in a R two medium density residential is one point five acres, one point one five and. It does not meet the minimum lot size requirements, however, the proposed lot consolidation decreases existing nonperformance. Plan requirements that weren't shown, location extended various soil types by. The NRCS classification, location of existing proposed wells. When onsite storage is supposed to propose. And they have the following notes should be on all final plans, the well, wells and service disposal system. Individual lot owners must apply to the township for a source permit. And in granting me full township is not certified or guaranteed the feasibility of the installation of any type of wellers. Or sewer disposal system. Lot improvement location not shown. Uh, deed book and volume, page number should be added at such time when the new deed and plan map are recorded. Signature of the registered special land surveyor not, not shown and current deed and proposed consolidation deed not provided. Uh, to get it, uh, have it uh, recorded, that means seal the license surveyor prepared plan. Uh, impress seal of the notary public owner certification and acknowledgement of plan that completed. And uh, recorded D's required as original signatures and any and all matters be recorded. They will not accept any photocopy or duplication of the signature. All plan review comments of the engineer should be near to, and I would recommend conditional plan approval.
Any discussion? Is there a motion for conditional plan approval?
So.
Second, all in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
Additional plan approval granted.
Next one is for Alan and Kathy H. Um, Al, Algr, yeah, Algrigal, Sharon, Mazurinsky, Raymond and Heath. And Junior and Sean Fisher and Sandra Kemmer and they're the owners of this. Major subdivision, block line revision, Eastside Borough. And as you can see, I've marked this map up and I had the copies made sent to Eastside Borough. To their engineer and to the, to uh, Caroline Lenahan, this township secretary. Uh, it's six lots or six existing lots. They're proposing five subdivided lots and they're gonna combine all these lots. All, all through here and we're gonna, uh, lot four has existing public municipal store, they're gonna, that's one acre. And Shaver's garage up there, Fisher's garage is down here at the bottom. The lot five proposed sore. And lot six, or lot five is not shown the plan in the water. Uh, the plan does not conform to preliminary final plan requirements, Eastside Row subdivision land development or ordinance. Minimum lot size required in the R one is, is uh. Zero point four six acres with central sore and three point oh, three acres with on lot storage. All these other, all the lots meet, meet that requirement except for lot. Proposed lot four and existing one five. And the uh. Their ordinance requires a submission of a preliminary and, and review and approval of preliminary and a review and approval. With final plan separate, they have no combining them. They have a waiver letter that the applicants are requesting away from the solid requirements, submit the major subdivision. Solely because the number of lots and involves only changes the boundary lines, no land development is proposed. And I pointed out, we would have no issue with the provenance waiver request that the plan should reflect approved the Eastside World. And data the waiver request. Again, the plans submitted are not conform to required drawing scale of one inch equals fifty feet of property in excess of two acres. Again, their, their, the plan is submitted, it's one inch was one hundred feet. And they're requesting a waiver to show it's on one, one track. And again, I believe we would have no issue with the provenance waiver request. Uh, name and address of record owner with source of title by deed book and page number certification of ownership. The statement by the record owner of that the subject property is free and clear of any, uh, any current pending litigation. And they have to be signed by the record owner and bear a notary seal, as you can see, none of that shown down here. Name and address of record owner with source of title by deed book and page number incorrect. All these past tax, person and people, uh, numbers are incorrect. We've been working on this one, I think, six years. Signed statement by surveyor responsible plan, that's the survey not completed, aiming west Spring Hill Road. Here. And Route nine forty not shown. Uh, existing utilities, uh, easements not shown, existing contour lines at vertical intervals. Of greater than five feet when existing slopes are five feet or greater. Applicant is requesting a waiver and I believe we would have no i- issue with the provenance waiver request. All plans must specifically address the subject as to whether any wetlands are located upon the sites, if no wetlands are played within the site. Certification of the absence of wetland shall be so noted upon the plan, which is certified by a person with appropriate training. Again, they're requesting a waiver for this. Uh, requirement, but how, there's a spring. They're not showing the access road going up to the spring. There's wetlands on the site, I've walked, I found them, so I would recommend if. Recommend an approval this way would be third wave, yeah. The first recommendation of proof this waiver request the Eastside Borough engineer. Space not provided lower rate in the final plan for acknowledgement of receipt and recording copies of description of easements, existing easements. A record or proposed even should be provided. Copies of any existing Penn Dot Highway occupancy permits for existing access drives and PA State Route nine four should be invited. Existing access road, uh, to the spring house located in proposal two should be shown. Two existing sheds down here located within that hundred foot right away easement for Spring Hill Road. I pointed out that the uh. That should be provided on the plan, the ownership information provided on the plan and, and are they the remainder requested to be located. This detail one Fisher property is shown on plan sheet two and on plan sheet one is incorrect for Carbon County. Tax mapping, I included the tax maps with the key parcel numbers on the plan. Draft D description should be provided for each combined lot to the borough engineer, copy of the recorded plan. And all the newly recorded fees for the subdivision line revision should be provided to the borough and original signatures that can't be replaced in the record plan. You know, any, all, in all plan review comments of the Eastside Borough engineer should be addressed before final plan approval. And I would recommend just sending this out to Eastside Borough for, for their review and recommendations.
Okay. There are motions for no recommendation, just review. Second.
Aye.
Great. Melissa, Devon, the owner of Penn Forest Township, lot line revision. Located by Marty Axman in the focus, right where you're. Right when you go up the driveway, it's right to the left. You can see the states in there and you can see where the, the uh. Septic tank dug and then located on the plane. And does not conform to Meyer Plan Requirements of Article Three. Plan is exempted from standard procedure for township. Again, the, they require two acre minimum, this is only one point zero zero three nine of the combined lots. Does not conform to required drawing scales and again, they're, the uh. Advocate is requesting a waiver and I believe we would have no issue with this waiver request. Certification of ownership not completed. Opposed location of wells, service disposals fields and alternate fields not shown. Statement block authorized in the Penn Forest County staff and consultant upon the. Fact the site is focused on just a room of review and determining consistency with the requirements, the Penn Forest Salzo not executed. Again, we get the significant natural features of trees, rain and ages, this caliber is not shown. And the uh. The applicant again is requesting the waiver and I believe you would know it. Have no issue with definitely request approval. Documentation, the storage enforcement also that proposed lot has been approved on lot systems. And they, they may require a storage facility planning module for the proposed on that source is this. Oh, it's lot, the applicant should submit a storage facility planning module application mail. E A D E P, determine the storage planning is necessary and provide township their approval letter when received. Again, directs the signatures directly on the recorded plan. Comments, recommendations of Cleveland and Forest Township engineer. Excuse me, and I would recommend additional plan approval.
Discussion? Is there a motion for conditional plan approval?
Make it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Additional plan approval is.
Next one is Melvin and Suzie Stolzfuß. And Timothy Laura, the owner is a minor subdivision lot, uh, combination, lower Tomanson Township. This is way at the, almost at the end of the county line. And it's a simple. Subdivision. Oh, man. You gotta get a cabin permit, put the cabin way back in the. This lot. There's a hunting cabin in the back here, you needed a permit for it. No, I could use it, we're only here. But I put it in, yeah. All right, it's uh, two hundred and thirty eight point eight eight, three one acres, four points, seven one two nine acres. Mister Stolzus was there the day I went down the side inspected, he gave me rides around the property on his four wheeler. Uh, lot one is existing agricultural land tract, post lot two is existing residential land tract. And there's existing structures on lot one, there's a recreational cabin and lot two residence, the garden, garage and barn. Aqua Shaco Creek was also traversing lot one. The plan is submitted, does not conform to plan requirements, Tomanson Township plan development. The plan, however, conforms to zoning. And the, and the drawing scales of one inch equals five feet, ten feet, twenty feet, twenty five feet. And thirty feet, one inch goes forty feet, fifty feet, or not meant. It has the scale of one inch equals one hundred feet and. As shown in the plan and a waiver let, waiver let, letter dated August twenty third, twenty twenty four, the applicant is requesting a waiver. Uh, regarding the plan scale, going to the side, she's operating the building to show details on the plan clearly. Again, I believe we had no issue with that. Certification of ownership and acknowledgement of plans not completed, certification of accessory and certification. Survey not signed by the engineer. Plan is submitted, does not show all existing and manmade features, existing structures and driveways, they want to keep those boundaries like. Right down here, all these. All these homes. From, uh, property boundary existing and proposed of all lots involved with the project shall be provided with bearings and distances to current data. Uh, Lower Smith Gap Road is a Pennsylvania state route. And it, plan shows an existing thirty, thirty three foot right away. The legal right of way shall be confirmed with Penn Dot District Five O and the applicant has provided correspondence dated June sixth, twenty twenty four. To the Penn, Penn Dot District Five Archive with the right of way and construction request, however, they didn't receive response back and it's not included. Uh, all survey monuments found and set are not shown and labeled, they're requesting a label or a waiver. Request. And. Heard it to the town, town, low Thomas and township engineer. And again, it should be shown the plan. All over, all overall plan should show all existing and manmade features, one hundred feet of project boundary as well as streets and existing and proposed. Jacey's or lots not provided in the plan. The future right of way of sixty foot total, thirty foot from its center line for Lower Smith Gap Road. Shall be shown a plan with the required front yard setback from this line. Copies of the highway option permit to existing lot one and two driveways shall be provided to the township. Land in order to provide copies of note not provided. Annex parcel egg, rose egg, just shown the plan sheets containing sixteen point oh seven seven eight acres is in conflict with plan note ten. Which shows annex parcel is sixteen point one over five. Again, original D's, copy of recorded plans and all comments of lower Tomanson Township engineer should be. Uh, addressed and I would recommend conditional plan approval.
Discussion? Is there a motion for conditional plan approval?
It's clear there.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Additional plan approvals.
Timothy Bartnew, Lecter. Lectner. On Spencer Drive. And two point Spencer Drive, Penn Forest Township. And it's a simple block line revision. It does not meet the two A minimum. Again, I pointed out that lot combination improves the existing on. For the purpose of determining compliance with the fifty yard. Fifty foot front yard, twenty foot rear yard, a fifteen foot inside yard setback required in the zoning. Uh, they should be shown on, on the plan, existing outfielding, the shed. Where here. Uh, is located within the fifteen foot yard setback requirement, it may be required to be relocated in addition to one hundred foot well. The existing storage treatment plant, uh, system isolation zone should be showed in the plan, truly close to that. On-site system that they didn't show the man, mound out there. Uh, key map for the purpose of locating the property being combined drawn at a scale not smaller than one inch with two thousand feet showing the relation to the property. Different, differentiated by tone and pattern to join property all three, this will bounce because one mile property not provided. This is basic plan, location map. Plan note should be added regarding the minimum lot area, minimum lot with front yard setback, rear, uh, rear yard setback, admitting yard setback. For zoning attachment two four, uh, attachment two. Uh, pavement width, the Spencer Lane and Thomas Lane is not shown, listing of the existing service disposal field not shown. Location with the purpose of existing easements and utility rights away within the proposed subdivision not shown. Contour intervals are not more than two feet for land with an average natural slope of five percent not shown. And that intervals are not more than five feet to. Uh, the land with average natural slope exceeding five percent not shown. And applicant should request a waiver from the solid requirement and. Again, I pointed out, we would have no issue with the granting that waiver request. Signature block, uh, authorized in Pennsylvania's, uh, Penn Forest Township staff and consultants at our pond. And that's expected sites. I pointed out that's just request away from the solid requirement and we would have no. Uh, issue with the wa, with the waiver request. Significant natural features but not limited to trees, greater than each caliber not shown. And pointed out that you request a waiver. Lot grading not shown. Survey closure computation should be right, the Penn Forest Township engineers. Copies of code draft feature descriptions provided to township. And original signatures in the plan comments and Penn Forest Township engineers should be addressed. And I would recommend conditional plan approval.
Discussion? Is there a motion for conditional plan approval? So, my second map, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Additional plan approval passes.
Next one is Blue Ridge Real Estate Company. Uh, fifty seven lots, major land or subdivision land development for Lake Shore Residential District. It went out here. Please. That's the layout, fifty seven lots on the South Shore Drive. And they're gonna access from the big boulder. The area, they want to go out, go and access out here on State Route, the Lake, Lake Carmody Road and. Out here at nine forty, which I doubt they're gonna get. Purvis working back.
Nine, nine forty or nine oh three?
Nine oh three right here.
Yeah.
Pointed out, we're, we adopted this from the Kitter Township zoning ordinance eighty six. Adopted January twenty fifth, nineteen ninety one, in the Kitter Township subdivision land development orange chapter one fifty three. Date at May nineteen eighty six. And we're in the seat of the comments, the application for review, final subdivision plan. And from Peters Consultants stated September fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen. And there's all comments all through the years here to two fifteen, two sixteen and two twenty four. With a workshop that we never received any comments from the Kitter Township, uh, did. Uh, after. Collinard Conservation District received the, the National Pollution Discharting Elimination System permit. And the Arrow Plan Review Comment stated November fourth, twenty twenty four, which I had to. Contact the applicant for to get the township never sent them to us. It's located south of Big Boulder Lakes, a buddy of the existing multi-family land development Kitter Township. Seventy two point oh acres, earth disturbance is thirty two acres, fifty seven lots and seven phases. Uh, Blue Ridge Municipal Water. That didn't change. Should say water. And existing brush and wooden cover land tract, moderate service loading conditions throughout, onsite investigation unfortunately retract. Reveal possible, uh, areas of wetlands that are shown in the plan sheets, no visual barriers or plan approval were noted. Plan review. Uh, we believe the plan does not conform to final plan requirements of chapter one fifty three of the Kitter Township subdivision land development ordinances. Nineteen eighty six. However, the plan is submitted conforms to the zoning ordinance eighty six adopted June twenty fifth, nineteen ninety one. And. Uh, it pointed out that under the zoning. Zoning review, the applicant should verify the zoning classification. Zoning classification data shown on plan sheet one of twenty, at least the zoning orders sourced on the plan sheet. The. Right here, zoning does not show up in, in the zoning eighty six and, and we don't review it, could a new one, two thousand and seventeen. It doesn't show up like that in that order. The subdivision review background, Carbon County Planning Commission has received the plan submitted to our office as the final plan. Other requirements of chapter one fifty three of the township land development order since eighteen eighty six. That were in effect at the time of the plan submission. We also wish to point out that the Carbon County Planning Commission did not review the preliminary plan submission. Lake Shore Land Development, two thousand and fifteen, done by Peters Consultant Incorporated. Version which was granted preliminary plan pool in two thousand and sixteen. First per chapter twenty, uh, one fifty three of the. Okay, of nineteen eighty six. Kitter Township, uh, officials did not forward the latest version of preliminary plan for Lake Shore Land Development, two thousand and one fifteen per. Chapter one fifty three ten, which the counter review. That all required applications for subdivision land development pool within the township. Shall be forwarded upon receipt to the County Planning Commission for review and report. Our last preliminary view for Lake Shore Residential Land Development in its Malcolm Kearney Incorporated version was dated. Two thousand, or May third, two thousand and six, and we also did one in two thousand and four. We never got this one for two thousand and fifteen. And there's. More things on that chapter one ten to be pointed out to the Kitter Township officials. Let that go for us. Uh, subdivision of land development ordinance section one fifty three fourteen. Requires all preliminary, uh, planned conditional information shall be required prior to submission of the final plan. Carbon County Planning Commission did not receive preliminary, uh, plan comments regarding conditional plan information required. For Lake Shore Land Development, two thousand and fifteen, Peters Consultant version. Just granted preliminary pool in two thousand and sixteen. Per the Arrow comment letter dated November fourth, the applicant submitted a waiver request from this requirement dated October thirty first. Two thousand and twenty four, the County Planning Commission did not receive this waiver request. And the first recommendation on approval of this waiver request to the Kitter Township engineer. The waiver request is approved, the plan should reflect approval by the Kitter Township. I got that waiver request from the applicant, not from Kitter Township or their engineer. Prior granting final approval or a major subdivision plan, the planning commission may permit the plan to be divided into two or more sections or phases. And may impose such conditions upon the filing of the sections. As it may deem necessary to ensure the ordinary development of the plan in compliance with the requirements of the solid section. One fifty three nineteen G that requires a divider or developer. Either shall install all required improvements for, uh, or provide for deposit with the township. A financial security supplemental board is supervised pursuant to the provision of money. Basic plan is submitted, does not conform to the minimum of twenty five percent of the total number of dwelling units. They're going up seven units, basic plans over here, seven units. All the way through, they don't comply with that twenty five percent. In addition, a time scheduled for the filing of final plan, plan application for each phase of section. Shall be submitted within the preliminary plan application, such schedules should be updated annually by the applicant honor before. The anniversary of preliminary plan approval. Until final plan approval, final section has been granted, any modification of your, for said schedule shall be subject. To approval by the board supervised at its discretion. Completion of the improvements, the plan shall, uh, finally, finally, be finally approved. Unless the street shown here on have been approved as required by this chapter, any walkways, curbs, gutters, streetlights, street signs, fire hydrant, shade trees. Water mains, sanitary source, storm drains, or any other required improvements have been installed. Section one fifty three nineteen guaranteed completion of improvements, in lieu of completion of any improvements. Required as condition for the final approval of plan, the deposit with the township of financial security shall be acquired. In an amount sufficient to cover the cost of any improvements or common amenities. Which, which may be required, including but not limited to roads, stormwater retention and/or retention bases and other related drainage facilities. Recreational facilities, open space, improvements or buffer stream planning. All file documentation of financial security shall be submitted to the township solicitor. For his review fourteen days prior to the public meeting at which the plan will be submitted for final approval. Otherwise, otherwise the plan will be denied. Solvo section one fifty nine D requires the amount of financial security shall be equal to a hundred percent. Of the cost of required improvements which by national security is posted. Including road regulatory and name signs should be shown in the construction plans. Certification of the utilities, power, water, uh. Certification of utilities that proper water, power and other facilities can be installed, including real serve letters. For water and storage and not provided, certification of ownership, acknowledgement of plan not completed. Per the Arrow review commented November fourth, profiles of the water distribution system. Per the Arrow review comment dated November fourth, profiles of the water distribution system and storage system. Shall include the locations of all apparatus or aperturances. Such as lateral services, fire hydrants, blow offs, et cetera. In addition, storage main change indicated on plan sheet ten of twenty profile. Shall be clarified as it appears the suicide is missing. Per the Arrow review comment dated November twenty, number four, twenty twenty four, agreement shall be made and executed by the board of supervisors. On half of the subdividers here is assigned, subject to review and approval by the township solicitor. Establishing the conditions under which the streets may later later be offered for dedication. Financial security improvements, maintenance improvements and inspection fee for the inspection improvements by the township engineer from not provided. Copies of the Penn dot highway. The P A State nine oh three Lake Carmody Road not provided. Shall be provided to the township. And noted in the plan, no correspondence to date has been received by the Carbon County Planning Commission. Phase one, phase two and phase three temporary turnabouts appear to extend beyond the property line shown in the plan. Advocates provide an easement for work and or clarify that the applicant has the right to reform proposed work and those proposed lots. Let me get the beginning here. Phase lot one, they come all the way up, but they're putting the turnabout on. Lot eight. Each turnaround, putting it on the joining lot, which they. It's not permitted. Let's see here. Water facilities require that the applicant must establish a water supply system capable of providing domestic water use and fire protection. Per Arrow Plan Review Comments feasibility on the Big Boulder Water System was prepared by Barry Eisen Association. Associates on February twenty seventh, two thousand and fourteen and submitted with the previous plan from two thousand and fourteen. And they are requesting the applicant provide an updated feasibility study and a copy of the previous study confirmation that study is still accurate. To show that improvements will be allowed for adequate water capacity and fire protection to services project. In addition, evidence should be provided by the Kitter Township Fire Chief that inadequate, reliable and available water stores can be provided. For firefighting purposes, fire hydrants or central water systems are proposed. Fire hydrants shall be located no more than five hundred feet apart and any approved street shall be connected to a water main at least eight inches in diameter. Fire hydrant is located between slot three. Three lots three and lot seven. See the five hundred foot men. And look between lots. And and yeah, and in thirteen. And thirteen. See the five better foot left. This one down here, seven meters deep. Centralized, the storage facility planning module waiver of the storage facility planning module for the centralized. Source disposal system for the proposed subdivision should be provided. Preservation of natural features and amenities, the review comment from Arrow. The applicant is requesting a waiver from from this providing a resource impacting conservation analysis per the letter dated. October twenty first, twenty twenty four. However, I added a verification of the wetlands delineation by the army of order of engineers should be provided. General review comments, accuracy of the survey plan not completed. Stormwater maintenance and improvements agreements, de restrictions, declaration of covenants and easements should be reviewed and approved by the Kitter Township. Solicitor solicitor prior to final approval. Again, original signatures. Recorded these are original signatures of the plan and review comments to the Kitter Township Engineers should be invited. And I just recommend we review this and submit this to Kitter Township. Where review and recommendations.
Question. A few things, as I remember the township planning commission as well. This came up at the last meeting. And some of the pieces of information that really Ivan brought up. We discussed that at the meeting. The one about the twenty five percent. There is asked for a waiver of that. And your explanation is it's not financially feasible for them to be the fact that the twenty five percent minimum. Development per phase. And.
And they have to make a decision why they never submitted their plans.
This will go to the to the. Township manager and then to the complaining commission as well, your entire report.
Yeah.
Okay, for the next meeting, which I think is number four.
One of the answers I got was we weren't there. Trying to think of the lady that was there, I haven't. Ever named before, this had never been submitted to us.
And basically, the applicant's position is. Well, it got approved nine years ago, so therefore we should have approval.
They have, I brought this along, just in case we question this. And you're one fifty three. They have it. They're staying in here, that's they're saying that. It got reviewed in eighty and eighty six with chapter one fifty three, and that's what you're reviewing it now. Like question then. You find it offhand, but every. Evidently, they. It's in here something. But they they cleared it here, because I questioned that, why didn't they go by two thousand and seventeen?
Right.
And I was told this is what.
Yeah, I I actually asked the Arrow engineer a similar question. He says they're grandfathered in. With respect to all new regulations. Since they got original approval and they've extended their approval, I think of five years term.
Yeah.
They extended a few times, they they automatically grandfathered into the original requirements. Which I found a little unusual. And another thing we were a number of things we picked off, we asked about the. By hydrants and the size of the piping. They scrambled and their design is a three inch main.
No, I could, that's for the houses, ten inches. I looked at the plan.
They they went through the plans.
At eight, eight inches.
Now it's eight inches.
Yeah.
Because we we asked them to change it to eight inches. Because they only had a three inch base to feed the by hydrants.
Next letter is an individual M P D S permit for the Buck Mountain Road Water Replacement.
Is there a motion for review without recommendation? I'll make a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next one is the, I have the individual M P D S permit they issued to Buck Mountain Road Water System Replacement and Use. The whole problem is here if anybody wants to read it. She gave her card number. And if, and this expires on October thirty first, twenty twenty nine. And the. One for the. That lot fire is December twenty thirty first, twenty twenty four. So they're. And that is it.
Okay. Everybody okay with the meeting continuing on the third booth there tomorrow, two o'clock?
Yes.
Commissioner, anything you would like to add? Motion for adjournment. Hi, Dennis.
Hello.
All right, we have a good Thanksgiving.